This conference will now be recorded.
Should we start over? Okay. Um, first item on the agenda, roll call.
Commissioner Berlin. Commissioner Lassen.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Dos Rias.
I am here.
Commissioner Corning. Vice Chair Bandolo.
Here.
Chair Piper.
Here.
Commissioner Guerra is absent, and I'll discuss that in a moment.
Um, during this COVID Zoom meeting period, I'm going to dispense with the flag salute. We have no minutes. Business from the audience that isn't otherwise on the agenda, so that would be things that don't, do not pertain to Dove Landing. Hearing none. Uh, do we have any communications?
Uh, I just wanted to point out that, uh, unfortunately Commissioner Guerra has resigned from the Planning Commission. She sent me an email and I spoke to her very briefly about it. Uh, personal reasons. Um, so we'll have to fill that slot. I've, uh, let the city recorder know. They'll start that process of bringing in someone else for that position. That'll leave us one short. Always appreciate everyone's attendance. And as always, if you know other people who are interested in coming onboard and volunteering, please, um, let me know and I can walk them through the process of how they go through it, through the recorder's office. Ultimately, as you know, the city council makes those appointments. That was all ahead.
Okay. Next item is a public hearing for the annexation 2020 oh three, commonly called Dove Landing, continued from March 25th, Planning Commission meeting. Uh, this is located along the west side of Boons Ferry Road, north of Hazel Nut Court. Hazelnut Drive, excuse me. Proposed annexation of 31.13 acres with subdivision and planned unit development of 166 houses on small lots with common track areas. Uh, first I will ask the commission if there are any declared potential conflict of entrance, conflicts of interest, or ex parte contacts or site visits. Okay.
Uh, Charlie, uh, Charlie?
Yes.
Uh, I'll make one, I'll make one. Uh, Hazel, uh, Hazel Drive. We drive at that location several times. Other than that, I have really nothing else to add to it.
Okay, we do, we do have a bit of a communication problem with you, Chris. So I don't, I don't know what the situation is, sir. Did you hear us okay?
Okay.
Yeah, we're getting. We're getting about every third syllable.
Commissioner Lassen, were you saying, were you saying that because you live down off Hazel Nut, sometimes drive and take that exit and you see the site, but you didn't notice anything? Or didn't have anything else to add?
Okay. Um, are there any challenges to the commission? Hearing none. Um, Mackenzie, are you reading the public hearing statement?
Uh, yes, Chair Piper. Good evening. Both Oregon Law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require that commencement of the hearing, this statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. Woodburn Development Ordinance Sections 2.05.05, 3.01, 3.02, 3.04, 3.06, 3.09, 4.01.07, 5.03.10, and 5.04.01, and 5.04.04. The hearing will proceed in the following general order: Staff Report, Applicants' Presentation, Testimony in Favor of the Application, Testimony in Opposition to the Application, Rebuttal, Closure of the Record, Deliberation and Decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria just stated, or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any party wanting a continuance where to keep the record open must make that request while the record is open. Chair Piper.
Thank you. I thought I was getting some more feedback there. Okay, um, staff report.
Good evening Chair and members of the commission. Can you hear me?
You're muffled.
Hmm. Oh, what the heck. I'll go ahead and take this off in a moment. All right. Think that's better, volume wise, without the mask.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So good evening all. Uh, I'll go ahead and present about the planning development for you called Dove Landing. Uh, so the issue before you is a development. It comes with several types of applications to make that development happen. Uh, the parent or the master one is an annexation. Uh, the site isn't in city limits yet. Uh, planning subdivision, uh, would divide the property into lots and tracks. And then there would also be a zone change, so it would go from county zoning to city zoning. Uh, so the role of the commission tonight is to make a recommendation on the package to the city council. And as formality, I'll take a moment, enter the report, its attachments, and the staff memo addendum into the record. So it's a very short and sweet executive summary. Uh, it's an annexation with development. There'd be 166 houses, which will actually be 171, and I'll talk more about that several slides down the line. Uh, for territory that's on the west side of Boons Ferry Road, north of Hazelnut Drive, and includes little over 8.3 acres of parkland. Where is the site more specifically? So on your screens, you'll see a vicinity map. And, uh, oh, if I may take a moment and share the screen so our viewers at home can see what we're seeing. I think that will help everyone. No, better late than never. Okay. All right. Back in business. All right. So now everyone can see the vicinity map. Um, the map shows parcels and streets. Uh, the large purple blob is the subject property. And the green ones indicate existing city parks throughout the city. So it gives you very much an idea of the scale of the property we're talking about with the 31-plus acres is. Moving on to the next slide, uh, there's a comparison of an excerpt of what zoning would be on the property. So much of the zoning in the area is for single-family housing. Uh, on the left, there's a manufactured home park in sort of the orange color. Uh, the golf course to the east has its own zoning district. And then there's a commercial little area there for property that's not yet annexed to the city. This whole property would be zoned for single-family development. This is a blow up of the aerial view of the property. Uh, it's outlined in purple. It was a hazelnut, or if you prefer, a field but orchard, uh, which is now defunct. And there are some trees on the property. I believe all of it was considered stock. Uh, you can see especially on the southern boundary of the property. Uh, and there's also a grove of trees towards the central east end, along where the natural drainages. Now, as a size comparison, I realize that, um, sometimes people can grasp property if they can relate it to something they kind of know. So this is a size comparison to the Woodburn Outlet Malls. Uh, the property is a little more than 80% the size of the property that the outlet mall covers. Um, if that helps give you a sense of size. More about the existing conditions on the property. Uh, here are two views. On the left is a view at the southeast corner of the property, uh, standing on Boons Ferry Road, looking more or less northwest. Uh, you can see that grove of trees I talked about. And then on the right is a view from the southwest corner of the property, uh, deep into one of the yards. Uh, you can see the southern stand of trees, uh, quite a bit of blackberry and other creepers, and, uh, some of the leftover stock from the field but orchard. Moving on to what's of the proposed development, uh, this is the concept site plan, uh, submitted uh, some time ago for the overall development. Uh, it happens to be spring colors. It was totally coincidental. There are several lot sizes proposed. They're all small lots. Uh, the smallest would be approximately 30 feet wide. Uh, that's what the purple color is representing, and these lots are located in the center block. Uh, the larger lots would be the pink and the light blue colors to the north and south. And those would be more in the range of, if I remember correctly, of about 40 feet wide. Uh, all the housing proposed is, uh, conventional houses, so detached houses. There's no row houses or anything like that proposed. As far as the structure, um, there are streets as part of this development. Uh, there's two connections to Boons Ferry Road at the east. Uh, the northerly one would, uh, line up with the street that would come out of the Trillium Reserve development that you saw a couple meetings ago. Uh, and then you can see in green the common area slash open space that's proposed for the project. Uh, also, one of the features in this in the central block is a private alley or a shared rear lane that would provide access to these lots. Uh, the main benefit of that is for the lot fronts on the streets, there would be no driveways, which means there would be far more street trees and a heck of a lot more, uh, public parking on the street because of that. Uh, moving on to the list of improvements generally, uh, staff worked with the developer to produce a number of things that come with the development. So there are the usual street improvements. There's also some places along those common areas where the sidewalk would be a little bit wider, and there'd be a little more street trees than usual. As you saw on the plan, there were some stubs out from the streets that connect to Boons Ferry Road, allowing for a logical expansion of a street network in the future. Uh, there are some subdivision connection paths, and I'll go back for a moment to show them that, um, because the blocks are kind of large, uh, you'll notice with these green areas and these dash lines that there are shortcuts through the blocks for people who are walking or cycling. And I mentioned there was public parkland proposed. It's about 8.32 acres. And it'll have improvements such as a path, benches, bicycle parking, that sort of thing. And I'll come back to this topic a little bit later as well. There's also remediation of those open space common areas. So, for example, removing the invasive blackberry, as well as adding a little bit more landscaping. And then there's some wayfinding signage that'll help people walk and cycle, tune from the development to the rest of the city. As far as process, uh, it's similar to what you see for other developments. So there was a staff report with something called analyses and findings. And it compared the application package with applicable provisions, mostly in the Woodburn Development Ordinance. Um, and looked to see whether those provisions are met, or if not, there is a number of conditions of approval to help the project get there. The parent application, the annexation, uh, is the most important thing. Everything is contingent on that. Uh, the subject property is within the urban growth boundary or the UGB for the city. It's adjacent to city limits. It's a very basic, uh, criterion for annexation. Um, and since the continuance for March 25th, um, staff has been able to reach an agreement with the developer. So I can say proudly the developer is now agreeing to dedicate those two tracks as public parkland that were talked about in the staff report, uh, instead of them having the private or HOA open space. So now the proposal meets the general criteria for annexation. Uh, regarding parkland in particular, it meets comprehensive plan policies, provides adequate capacity and a good level of service for parks, and so staff can recommend approval of the annexation. For the planning of development, I'll recap what that is. So PUD is set up so a developer can request modifications to the code, to the WDO, for things like smaller lots, uh, narrower lots, shallower setbacks and higher density, in exchange for some kind of public benefits. Uh, and staff interprets to a large degree what enhanced public amenities are for PUD, and what are commensurate public benefits. And so, um, in this case, the main issue with the developer was parks. And as I mentioned before, thankfully, we reached an agreement with the developer. So the project comes with enhanced public benefits, in this case particularly parkland, and staff can recommend approval of the PUD as well. So I'll go into some detail, public parkland. And I'll go back to the vicinity map, and then in the next slide, it'll transition to representation of those two tracks. It'll be public parkland. So you can really see how 8.3 some acres is quite large and how it is in comparison to the rest of the parks in the city. The two more or less largest parks would be Centennial Park in the southwest, and then Legion Park in the central east off Park Avenue. And all of this park wouldn't be as big as those. Um, you can see just at a glance the potential for this park being a regional park for the city. As well as it's a very serendipitous placement in terms of access for existing development and new residents. Uh, this is an excerpt of one of the images from the staff report. So you can see specifically up close the shape of the two tracks in question. Uh, one's about an acre, and the largest one in the southwest is little over 7.2 acres. And as another kind of comparison, on the left is an image of Settle Meyer Park, which is almost 7.9 acres. And you can see how the proposed parkland of 8.3 compares to that, gives you an idea spatially of, um, how it might look more or less in the future. And this is a list, a summary of what's in the proposed conditions in terms of improvements. Um, so the gist of it is that there will be a number of these improvements built by the developer in this parkland upon dedication. In terms of things being major, uh, there's not a lot in terms of buildings. The only buildings per se would be, uh, restrooms building, and then a shelter or a combination of two smaller shelters. So I'll go into what's happened since the staff report. So the applicant had requested the continued hearing, and we did work to reach an agreement on several items, uh, foremost the park issue, and we were able to reach an agreement on those items. And there are several recommended changes, and what staff did is outline them explicitly in a memo that was posted today to the website or the webpage for this meeting, and then given to use print copies. And I will overview them on the next few slides as well. So the first change, uh, was for the most important issue, the parkland. Uh, there was an existing condition basically saying there needed to be common area and improvements. And what it does, it makes explicit that there are improvements necessary and dedication necessary to have private common area and public parkland. And then also to reassure the developer that the proposal would meet the required open space for development. And then also to give the developer some reassurance, um, that after land use approval, uh, the developer would be seeking reimbursement for what's called a system development charge or STC. Uh, the city has existing duly adopted ordinances and resolutions, both to assess and collect the fees, and also to allow developers to request that improvements be eligible and be credited. Um, so there's an existing process in place for that, and the developer wanted to, uh, set up a path for that to be easy for the developer to pursue. The second change is the developer wanted to add five more lots, so to raise the total of houses from 166 to 171. Um, there's no harm in doing that, so there's a proposed condition that acknowledges the site plan revision, revision is okay. And I should point out that the proposed open space originally was larger than the minimum required for a PUD. So even with these additional five lots, the development would still meet the minimum open space area. And on this next slide, um, this is an excerpt of that updated site plan the applicant gave, and you'll see outlined in pink, uh, where those five additional lots would go. And as I said, there would still be the minimum open space required for a PUD in the development. And the last item was an existing condition about building an enhanced pedestrian crossing. The city has a document called the Transportation System Plan or TSP, which has a number of capital projects the city would build in the next 20 years. Uh, one of them is improving the crossing conditions at the intersection of Boons Ferry Road and Constitution Avenue slash Tuck Willa Drive. The condition basically says the developer would build that. Uh, what the developer asked was to add a statement that, um, developer could start getting STC credits for that improvement. Uh, and with that, I'd like to go ahead and introduce our Assistant City Administrator, who's, uh, joining us by video conference. I understand he wanted to join us, uh, to speak a few words about parks. And I will go ahead and.
Thanks Colin. Yeah, this is Jim Rouse, Assistant City Administrator, and, um, Chair Piper, uh, commissioners, thanks for having me tonight. Um, I was having a little trouble with my computer, so I ended up calling in, uh, also here. But, um, Colin did an exceptional job of discussing the park issue and, uh, in particular, kind of noting that it was pretty apparent when you look at the map of the city with the existing parkland, that this particular area of the city is deficient in parkland. And so through the negotiation with the developer, it, uh, it was an important issue for us to make sure that we could adequately address this issue. It's important for the city overall when it makes decisions to annex property into the city that, to make sure that it meets the, the public's need. And so we had a pretty significant concern with their original, um, application. But I'd like to give a tremendous amount of credit to the developer. They, uh, worked with us in good faith, and very quickly, over just a two-week period of time, um, we were able to come to an agreement that, uh, that we feel really very, very good about. Um, Colin gave a good overview of the size of the parkland and the amenities that are to be included. So you've got a pretty good handle on that. Um, and I'll just say that, uh, from, from the city's parkland and public open space needs perspective, this application is one that we feel very, very comfortable with. Thanks Colin.
Thank you, Jim. So with that, that's the end of the slide presentation, and, um, I'll pause and see if there's any immediate burning questions, um, things you need clarification on, uh, before we move on to having the applicant be introduced. Oh, no. Uh, to be clear, in fact, I can use the, uh, image on the screen for this. Uh, so the site plan, uh, the white drawing in the middle, uh, the center block that has the alley, because it has the alley, the auto access would be from the alley, so there'd be no driveways along this block, but just this block. The other lots have conventional access. Uh, yeah, all the lots would have garages.
Colin and Chair Piper, this is Mackenzie Granham. I'm just, um, letting you guys know that if the commissioners are asking questions, please speak into the mic because we can't hear, otherwise hear you. I can only hear Colin. Thank you.
The other question is about the parkland. I don't think any of the parks have basketball courts, do they?
Uh, and point of fact, well, I don't know which ones do, but I knew the nearest one called Heritage Park happens to have maybe not a full court, but some kind of basketball court.
Right.
And, um, yeah, and I'm sure Jim could speak to that more if you'd like.
That is something we need. I have to agree. Couldn't find a place to play basketball.
Right.
Without walking all the way.
If I may anticipate a follow-up, um, there's no game or sports courts proposed for these particular parks.
No, I know. That's why I'm asking. Can we put it in or, you know, add it to?
I heard Jim try to jump in, Jim Rouse.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to. Um, so just from memory, we have a half court at Heritage Park, which is relatively close by, um, a full court at Centennial Park and a full court at Burlingham Park. So, um, nothing really in the immediate vicinity, and we've found that basketball courts are a pretty popular amenity in town. Um, the, the list of, of parkland improvements that are conditioned upon the developer, uh, don't necessarily mean those are the only improvements that will happen at that park. And that was one of the reasons why it was important for the parkland to come into city ownership, because a lot of the traditional sources of funding that we utilize for park, uh, improvement projects is, uh, is grant sourced, and those grants typically require that the parks be owned by the public agency. Uh, and so we would anticipate, um, taking a look at the overall development potential for that public parkland and, uh, making some additional decisions about amenities that might, uh, belong in addition to kind of the basic amenities that were included as a condition of development. So a basketball court could be one, uh, a playground could be another, for instance. It's not the kind of site that's conducive to sports fields, uh, so I don't think you're going to see like a baseball field or a soccer field there, but it's a, some of the more, for the most part, more passive sort of recreation activities, I think this site could accommodate well.
Thanks.
With that, I look to you, Chair Piper.
Okay. Um, next up is testimony by the applicant. And I would remind people who wish to testify to please state their name and address for the record.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Is it possible for Eric Hawkinson to do a screen share? He has a PowerPoint for us.
Standby. We'll make an app.
Thank you.
I have five more houses right here. So we're here. All right, this way. Still there, just.
Uh, Mr. Hawkinson, we shared the screen. Are you able to, um, present?
Sorry, but it kicked me off there for a second. Hold on one second. Yeah, I'm not sure why it's not letting me click the screen share button. Colin, is there a way that you can e- enable that?
I did it again. Is it working?
Yep, that seemed to have done it. Oh, no, it's. Sorry, one second here. Huh, it's giving me this deny.
Let me, why not, two of you, because your name is appearing twice in two squares. That might have something to do with it.
Do you have Eric's name in two squares?
Yeah, Eric Hawkinson appears twice. So I'll try making Eric Hawkinson presenting this time.
Okay.
Go ahead and try.
Yeah, it's got the same, just kind of a grayed out. Just not, Nate, allowing me to click it, so I'm not sure. Um, Colin, would it be easier if I just emailed you the PowerPoint real quick?
Go ahead. We will make this thing work.
Mr. Chairman, uh, he's going to go get his uh email set up so he can bring it in. Um, just for the public listening, listening in, uh, who wanted to testify, just to make sure you all understand sort of the procedural. You all get a chance to speak and testify. Uh, we just sort of walked through a a process where the, after the applicant provides their testimony, uh, then we'll have an opportunity for uh you all to speak. I appreciate your patience. And since uh some of you, I know, were here two weeks ago for the meeting, I appreciate your patience and our, the technological snafu that I had the last time you were here. Uh, I really do appreciate it. I know it can be, can be aggravating. We're all trying to work our way through it.
I try to log off one more time and see if that helps it.
Eric, he's uh taking one moment to hopefully upload you on our end. You could probably just talk us through uh the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Stacy's going to be giving the presentation. Thank you, guys.
All right, now that I shared the screen, we're ready to go.
Okay, thank you so much, Colin. You guys can still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my name is Stacy Connery. I'm with Pacific Community Design. I'm the Planning Manager and representing the applicant through the first part of this presentation. Thank you, Colin, for such a such a thorough presentation to begin with. And I'll try to, I'll try to make our presentation brief to not repeat too much of what you've already described. And my plan is to step through some of the highlights of the project and then have Mike Robinson make a couple of statements. And then we'll open it up to questions. But if you could go ahead and advance to the next slide. Okay, I wanted to start by introducing our development team, which we do have everyone on tonight so that we can respond to any questions that may come up. Mike Robinson is the applicant's legal representation. With Pacific Community Design tonight, we have two planners, myself and Eric Hawkinson, and two engineers, Patrick Espinosa and Craig Larson. Our applicant tonight is Peter Etro with Ben Williams. And our arborist, Morgan Holan, is online tonight, as well as our traffic consultant, Jennifer Danzinger with Lancaster Mowgli. And if you could advance. Thank you. Um, just a quick overview, this request covers the annexation, zone change, planned unit development, both conceptual and detailed plan reviews, preliminary subdivision, tree removal approval. And as Colin noted, the project now includes 171 detached single-family homes and 9.57 acres of parks and open space. 8.32 acres of that is public, to be publicly dedicated. The project also includes an onsite storm facility. And if we could advance. Okay, just some of the highlights of the project. The project does comply with all of the applicable criteria for all of the requested approvals, as Colin also detailed in his staff report. The plan that you're seeing next to this text is the most current version. And we really appreciate all of staff's assistance working through this process. We've worked through, I think, at least three different iterations of the project. And I think we all are happy with where we've landed. Um, this plan does include tracks K and I, which are the lime-green colored open space areas that will be dedicated to the public. The remaining green areas that you see on this plan will be HOA-owned and maintained. And we do have trail connectivity thrown, shown through these open space and park areas, as well as through these mid-block connections that will provide connections to the east and the west, to the north, should there be future development north of the site, as well as to the south of the site through a public street that will extend to the south property line. The project complies with the density that's allowable in an RS zone and includes a variety of lot types. As Colin was describing, the internal block is alley-loaded. So the garages are at the rear of the homes, so the front will be free of driveways. And the lots facing that internal block will be your conventional type of front driveway-accessed home. Um, the utilities and transportation facilities for this project are adequately available to serve the project. And as Colin also noted, the developer will construct um TSP Project 45, which is the pedestrian bridge connection to the high school. And if we could go ahead and advance to the next slide, and I will turn it over to Mike Robinson for a couple of statements, and then we'll open it up for questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Uh, Chair Piper, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Mike Robinson. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Schwabie Williamson and Wyatt. My mailing address is 1211 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 1900, Portland 97204. Uh, my testimony is brief. I don't want to cover the same topics that you've heard from Colin and Stacy, but I do want to say a couple of things. First of all, I want to echo what everyone else has said. Uh, we very much appreciate the collaborative process with staff, Jim, Colin, and Chris. Thanks very much for your time over the last couple of weeks. The applicant is pleased that we could come to an agreement with staff on how to make this work, not only for our approval, uh, but to help make Woodburn a better community. We agree with all the conditions of approval, including the provision of STC credits for the applicant's construction of park improvements. Uh, those conditions of approval are found in the original staff report and in Colin's supplemental staff report that's physically before you tonight. We reviewed all of the conditions and all of them are feasible to be achieved. So we ask that you, after you hear all the public testimony, testimony tonight, uh, that you uh find that the applicant has satisfied the approval criteria, as Colin and Stacy have explained. I want to uh just suggest, if you have any questions, that's why we're all here tonight. Please ask us anything before you choose to close the record. We're happy to answer your questions. Uh, Chair Piper, that's all I have. We appreciate your time and we hope that you'll approve the application as recommended to you by staff.
Thank you. Next up, well, let me, let me do this. Does a commission have any question of the applicant at this time? Shoot, Luke.
Are utilities at, oh. Are the utilities underground or above ground?
Utilities are underground. The s- the stormwater pond is is on the surface, but the rest, everything else is underground.
Okay. And what about, how many um spaces in the garages?
I think, I think we, oops.
No, go on.
Sorry, my, I was messing with my microphone there. I think we have a combination of two-car and one-car garages.
And is there adequate street parking or where will the overflow be?
There is adequate street parking. We did look at that as part of the the responses to criteria as part of the planned unit development. So we ran a calculation of what the required parking on-street would be and are able to provide that. With this project, one of the benefits of the alley-loaded lots is it, it does open up that whole side of the street for on-street parking. And there are several, several other locations where things are, things can, vehicles can park on the street, on the the north-south streets, as well as in between driveways on the driveway side of the road.
And what about the landscaping? I mean, it's such a tight project. You know, I don't know, where are you going to put trees or shrubs or?
The street frontages will include planter strips for street trees. The side of the streets with the alley-loaded homes, that'll be a continuous frontage with with planter strips. And the, let's see, the the street frontages with driveways, there will be space for street trees in the planter strips in between the driveways. The front yards will also be landscaped and the open space tracks, of course, will be landscaped.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Um. Testimony by proponents, that is those that are in favor of the project. Since we don't have a signup list tonight, you're just going to kind of have to wade in, folks. And again, I would ask that that you uh give us your name and address. Hearing no testimony by proponents, we will go to testimony by opponents, those who are opposed to the project.
Mr. Chair, it might help if we, we could try calling a few names. Oh, and just to make sure that they get heard. So we may call a name and have somebody say.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Jim Nicolarsen would like to testify.
Should I say something? I have a question.
Go.
Um, my name.
Name and address, please.
Julie Nicolarsen, 620 Troon Avenue, Woodburn.
Thank you.
Um, uh, hi, I am curious about the alleyway. Why did they do that? Is it uh one-way? Um, uh, which is going to create, you know, bottlenecks in the morning? If they all have to go one way or two ways or, so that's, that's, you know, that could be valuable yard uh yards for the the lots instead of, you know, pavement. So I'm curious about that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may recommend uh to collect all the questions and testimony upfront, so the applicant can take notes and then respond later in one go.
Yep, yep, agreed. Um. Is there anybody else? What what we're going to do and the way these, this process works is that um we'll take all the testimony and then we give the applicant a opportunity to respond to the testimony. So this is a phase when we're still taking testimony and question by those who are opposed to the project. Or if you're not necessarily opposed but have a question, go ahead and ring in at this time.
Hi, my name is Brenda Gonzalez and I have a question. I live at 1105 Eagle Drive in Woodburn. I would like to know how many of the hazelnut trees are going to be cut, if any? And how much of the trees on the southern part of the property will be left?
Okay. Anyone else? Testimony by opponents? I was going to say Cindy, I see your mic come on.
Yeah, can you? Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Okay, I just had, my address is 16751 Boons Ferry Road Northeast. And I have the lot right on the north corner of the project. I noticed there's a small greenway behind my property. But my house used to be, was the first schoolhouse in Woodburn, the Hall School. And when they sold the property off, the, which is now the Filbert Orchard, they cut our property line right on my back deck. And so my question is with that little, how wide that greenway is behind my house? And also, is there going to be some kind of concrete barrier or fence up? Or what what's going to happen in that area? What's my question? And along my garage, the back of my garage as well.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I have a question. This is Jim Nicolarsen, 620 Troon Avenue, Woodburn.
Please enter your access code, followed by the pound or hash.
This is, this is who, please?
Jim Nicolarsen, 620 Troon Avenue, Woodburn. Can you hear me?
Yes, is this uh Mr. Nicolarsen? We're getting feedback from you, sir.
How about now?
That sounds a little better. Again, name.
Are we good to go?
Name and address, please.
Jim Nicolarsen, 620 Troon Avenue, Woodburn.
Go.
We're good?
I say, go ahead.
Okay, so I have a question for staff as far as this development seems fairly small as far as lot size. Is there any other developments recently that are even close to this small lot sizes? It just doesn't seem like it's conducive to the area. And I also would like to know a little more about this bridge. It's going to need access for for the high school. Is this a bridge that's going to go across, the testing bridge go across Boons for its kids to get across? I'm just trying to visualize that.
Okay.
All right.
Questions are noted. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will move to rebuttal by the applicant. The applicant's opportunity to respond to the questions and comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, I'll start with the question of why, why we're doing the alley-loaded product. We, we worked through a number of iterations of this plan with staff. And at one point in time, they asked us to look at providing some alley-loaded product in this project. Both of, both of us feeling that it would enhance the streetscapes of the project. And so with the alley-loaded configuration, there is a a 20-foot-wide roadway that's behind the homes that provides access to garages at the back of the lots, which opens up the front of of the lots facing the street for that area to be entirely landscaped and provides a nice green space for the homeowners. And what tends to happen is those areas will become areas for socializing in the neighborhood. So that there's green space that's provided in the front of the homes. There will also be some shared yard areas on those homes too for private spaces as, and in some cases, there may be some area in the rear of the alley-loaded homes that may be green space that. area in the rear of the alley-loaded homes that may be green space that's shared with an out, with a side area as well. And then to talk about the trees, the, the Filbert trees that are on the site, those, those will be coming out. But there is a good, um, good stand of trees along the south boundary of the site, which is one of the reasons why we cited the open space on the south side of the property so that as many trees as possible within those stands could be retained within the park area. And we'll work with staff to try to assure that the improvements and the pathways that go into that park are cited in a manner that helps us to preserve as many trees as possible. Um, let's see. The question about the open space that's in the northern part of the project, I'm gonna ask if Patrick Espinoza or Craig Larson could help describe the condition of that tract?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can answer that. My, my name is Patrick Espinoza with Pacific Community Design. Address 12564 Southwest Main Street. Excuse me. Um, I believe if we can pull up the map again, just so I can verify what track we're talking about. Um, if, if you wouldn't mind calling.
Give me just a moment.
Thank you.
In the meantime, I'm just gonna throw out another thought on the alley-loaded homes. Um, one of the things with the design of the overall site, the, um, the smaller lot size does allow us to, to provide these larger parks and open space areas and allows us to provide this large public park for the city. And the, the homes will also include porches, so they'll, they'll help with what, the porches will invite people hanging out in their front yards and the streetscape should be very interactive in this neighborhood. Okay, go ahead, Patrick.
Thank you. Okay, so we're talking about, I believe, tract F here on the northeast corner. Is that correct?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, I can. So the, the treatment of that open space, the area directly adjacent to the street will be lawn for the most part. Um, but there will be a 10 to 20-foot strip along the edges of your lot with more shrub-like planting, more screening planting to provide some privacy. We haven't really discussed fencing. Um, I didn't know if there was fencing already involved, but I imagine along with that screening, um, some fencing could be provided for more privacy.
Okay. How, how wide is it, the strip behind my house?
Uh, let me check real quick. Um, along the south edge of the site, um, the strip at its narrowest is probably about 20 feet and along the west side of, of your lot. Um, again, the strip is probably about 20 feet to the adjacent lot.
Okay.
Okay, did, Colin, would you like to respond to Mr. Nicolarsen's question or did you want us to try that?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay, um, well, I can respond to the, briefly to the, um, pedestrian access to the high school. That is not, it's not something that's like a bridge across Boons Ferry. It's a, a project that the city has identified as part of the transportation system plan that is off the property. It's located south and west of this site. I, I think Colin may be able to point out the location more clearly. Regarding this smaller lot sizes, we can speak to it from a market perspective. As this, this type of product is something that is very marketable in today's economic market. And there are a lot of homes within, within areas that I have worked in that are built like this and are very successful and thrive with the neighborhood interaction that happens with the dynamic of having like a diversity and home type with the alley-loaded home and front-loaded home and having parks near those areas. It can create a very close, tight-knit, thriving community. And I'll let staff add on to that if they'd like. Any other questions for us at the moment?
Chris and Colin got their heads together and they're discussing something. I think we, we'll get a comment from them here.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Stacy, you were asking a question to me.
Oh, I was just, I was finishing up and asking if you guys wanted to add on to anything I'd said. Sorry, I didn't, didn't realize you were distracted.
Um, I'll make one comment, which I think the bridge caused some confusion because there's no bridge actually proposed.
I'm sorry.
Was meant was a, an enhanced pedestrian crossing of Boons Ferry Road, which would probably be a crosswalk. That would be located at Boons Ferry in the intersection of Constitution Avenue where it meets Tuck Willa Drive. That's the project.
Okay.
And the only other, the only other additional piece would be, uh, it was a a question about where we've seen these other, uh, we call them rear-fed or alley-fed lots. This is very similar to what we are, have currently under construction over at Smith. It's the same PUD concept with the alley-fed, um, with the different housing types within one PUD. So we have the, allowing these smaller lots with the alley-fed units allows us to open up the, the area in front on the street for more green space, brings the front porches closer. So they aren't covered with driveways and then it opens up the area for more common open space. Very similar to what we have at Smith. They have the alley-fed lots as well.
Thank you. Stacy, are you concluded with your, your rebuttal?
I, I think so unless there are any further questions.
Okay.
And I appreciate the opportunity. Oops, thank you.
Are there any questions from the planning commission?
No.
I see none, and so I will close the record and close the public hearing. And move on to discussion and deliberation by the commission. Don't everybody jump in at once. Chris, you want the floor?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yeah, I'll make one comment. Looking everything and reading through it, it appears that, uh, it's been well documented and well, uh, well planned. Uh, staff's done a good job, particularly when they came back and made other changes to the original, uh, that were a couple of weeks ago. So I, I think it's clear in my mind, uh, what's being done. It's close to where I live. Uh, and you can see it from the, actually the deck of the golf course. At any rate, it, I think it's gonna be a, a good addition to the city of Woodburn. And, uh, will definitely be something we can look back on and think that we've done a good job. That's all.
I agree. I'm interested in seeing what the houses look like. I guess in the next days we'll see that.
The thing too about the alley load is any of them I've visited over the years that are, are, uh, alley load, it frees up that front for all the walking and everything. You don't have cars in there. And I think it's a good plan that, to lay them out that way. It's relatively new to our area, but not new around the country.
But what about backyard?
It's not a backyard kind of a development.
Yeah, I guess not.
My comment would be, there was, there was a question about the hazelnut trees that are on the site. Having grown up in that neighborhood and knowing the previous landlord, uh, property owner, those hazelnut trees are of a, um, breed, I guess is the right word, or a type that is very subject to Filbert blight. And in addition to that, they have been pretty much neglected for the last 10 to 20 years. And I don't think there's much there in terms of Filbert trees to be salvaged. I would agree with Chris. I think this is a well-thought-out proposal. I think staff and the applicant have done a great job. And at that point, Chair would entertain a motion.
I have a motion. I move that the planning commission recommended the city council, the Dove Landing Planned Unit Development Consolidated Applications for Development, ANX 2020-03, be approved with conditions established in the staff report of March 25th, 2021 and supplemental staff report dated April 8th, 2021.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to essentially approve the annexation uh, and PUD for Dove Landing. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you all for your time and consideration on this. Great job. The next thing up on our agenda is a workshop on the middle housing project, project to conform with Oregon House Bill 2001 passed in 2019 and OAR 660-046 regarding allowing duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses and cottage clusters, middle housing in zoning districts that allow detached houses. Staffs and consultants seek direction on code concepts for how to go about mending the WDO.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. We'll keep it short and sweet and say that this is the second time we're talking about this topic. And I'll go ahead and give the floor right to Mr. Jim and Campbell, the consultant.
Okay, give me one second. I just need to get my mic on here. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so, um, go ahead and share my screen. Um, thank you for, for having us tonight and, um, we have, we have a lot to cover. In this work session and this presentation, uh, so I'll, I'll look to the chair and to, to staff to, um, to guide me if, uh, we need to postpone any of these topics as we, as we work through them. Uh, hopefully we can get through all of it, uh, tonight, uh, but there's a lot to cover. So just, uh, heads up, we'd like to get as much of your feedback tonight so that as we move forward in the next step of the project, which is to begin to draft specific code amendments, uh, that we have enough, uh, feedback in, in direction, uh, from, from you, the planning commission. So what we're gonna cover tonight, uh, is to quick check in on the overall project schedule for the middle housing project. Uh, we will give you a brief update on the infrastructure analysis that's been completed. And then the bulk of our time, we'll talk about various, uh, code-related topics and get your feedback on some various options the city has. Kind of broadly for how to move forward in implementing the new middle housing requirements under Hospital 2001. Okay, so here's the timeline of the project and we are, uh, here in, um, early April and the, um, the stage we're at is having completed a draft code concepts, uh, report, which is included in your packet. And that is going to be, uh, presented to, uh, the public, uh, in a different form via a uh, virtual open house, uh, which will be, uh, online shortly next week and open for about three weeks through the end of April. Uh, so we'll be collecting some feedback through that virtual open house, which is a, uh, is a webpage that's gonna be available with a lot of, uh, detailed information. Presented in a way, hopefully that your, your, uh, layperson can, um, can access and give us some thoughts on how they'd like to see middle housing, uh, types be developed in Woodburn. Uh, and we're also here in the planning commission, uh, to get your feedback before we move into that, the next phase of the project, which will be to, uh, start to draft some code amendments and revise some of the concepts that we'll talk about tonight. Uh, so the next time we come to you, we will have, uh, draft language for at least, um, some of these topics, so draft code language to review. Okay, first up is the, uh, infrastructure audit work that has been completed. You may remember we talked about it as the, um, the infrastructure-based time extension request or IPTER and, uh, that is a, um, a document that, um, oh, excuse me. Uh, the IPTER request is a, um, option for cities to attempt to, uh, file an application to the state to delay approval or, um, adoption of, uh, code changes to allow middle housing. Uh, in specific areas where it can be shown that there are infrastructure deficiencies which, uh, middle housing, which would, um, prevent the development of middle housing. And so as part of the scope of this project, uh, our consulting team, which includes, uh, MoTAC and several other, uh, engineering firms, uh, looked at the various, uh, infrastructure systems uh, in, in the city. And they, uh, did a closer view of all the existing information that they, that was available. Uh, and the findings from that are that there is not a, uh, strong evidence of a deficiency in infrastructure that would meet the requirements of the foreign IPTER, uh, request. Uh, so the recommendation from the consulting team and supported by staff is to not pursue an IPTER request. That doesn't mean that there won't be other, um, infrastructure planning, uh, and changes that may need to happen to make sure that, um, you can, um, respond to the, any new infrastructure needs that's come about as a result of middle housing. Uh, but it does mean that we don't recommend filing the application to, um, to try to delay approval through the IPTER process. So, uh, just wanna, we don't have any other, um, information to present on that tonight. Uh, the decision and recommendation is to not move forward with the request. Uh, I just wanna see if you have any questions about, uh, that infrastructure audit, uh, process and the decision to not pursue the IPTER. Okay, we'll move forward unless there's any questions, okay? any questions. Okay. And we'll get into code concepts. So in your packet, um, the um, staff report included a um, a brief memo that was summarizing uh, the code concepts report. And the um, and so what I'd like to do today is to go through each of these code topics. Uh, and I'll present a little bit of information about what's in the report in terms of the various options we've identified. Uh, and then I'd like to uh, have the commission weigh in on a couple of kind of key questions. So which of the concepts do you support or not support? Uh, and do you have any other general concerns um, on this topic that um, you'd like us to try to address as we begin to draft the, the specific code amendments? So keep that in mind. That's what we're looking for today is um, a bit of direction on um, on some of these topics. There are clear alternatives. So there's concept one or concept two, not really a middle ground. Uh, on others, there are um, multiple concepts and they're not necessarily exclusive. Uh, so we'd like your direction on which ones you support, which ones you don't support. Uh, those are the nine topics I'd like to get through today. Uh, so why don't we jump right in? So the first is minimum lot size. So you might recall from our uh, first presentation uh, early on in this project that uh, the uh, rules implementing Hospital 2001 uh, limit the minimum lot size that can be required for middle housing types. Uh, and if the city wants to pursue a lot size that is higher than that cap that's set by the state, then they would need to um, go through a process to show that the, that minimum lot size requirement will still allow middle housing on a certain percentage of lots citywide. So these two concepts I'm going to present tonight don't require that. Um, they are meeting the minimum compliance standards of the um, of the law. If these uh, concepts don't uh, feel um, if you don't feel you could support any of these concepts, then we can do, start to explore that alternative track. At this point now, though, we'd like to focus on, are then you, each of you are these concepts supportable for you? So the first one is that the city would require generally uh, larger lots for middle housing. So if a single family house is own now requires 6,000 square feet, a, for example, a quadplex would require 7,000 square feet. Uh, and that's the ma- maximum that can be required uh, under Hospital 2001 rules. Uh, a alternative to that, uh, here labels concept two would be uh, that the city simply permit most middle housing types on the same size lots that single family housing is permitted. And some of the philosophy behind that is kind of captured in this image and, and that is um, requiring a larger lot for a duplex or triplex compared to a single family house does not necessarily um, mean that that duplex or triplex will be more compatible in size or scale or aesthetics as the main house um, or as the single family house. Uh, so this is an example of a duplex right next to a single family house. It's on the exact same, same size lot. Um, if they're almost indistinguishable, but the reason they are is because the form of the building, the size, the design of it. Uh, those are things that make it compatible um, with another, this single family house. And so nationally, as we're um, cities that are starting to allow more middle housing are generally focusing more on the, the size of the building and the form of the building and the less on making sure that it has a larger lot or that it has some equivalent level of density. So this will mean higher density uh, development, but the idea here is to focus more on the form of the building and less on the number of units in it. So that's a, in a positive for um, or requiring the same size lots for single family and middle housing. Uh, we did a little bit of analysis to see how this would affect where middle housing could be developed. Um, so if we took the example of a quadplex, if you um, uh, went with concept uh, one, which would require a larger lot for middle housing, then quadplexes could only be developed on those lots here, which are in light blue. Uh, and if you went with concept two, which would allow middle quadplex on the same size lot as a single family house, that would open up the possibility for more existing lots to be built. So it is more friendly to uh, infill of new housing. Uh, another thing to keep in mind with all of this um, is that the locations where middle housing will eventually be developed will be constrained by um, where there are not existing CCNRs in place that would otherwise prohibit it. Uh, so existing CCNRs that say that um, you know, subdivision, there cannot be a, anything other than a single family house. Uh, those remain enforceable under Hospital 2001. And uh, so that will affect kind of practically where you can expect no housing development to happen. We don't know that all these subdivisions here have those types of CCNRs, but we do know they have CCNRs and um, many CCNRs do include that type of provision that would limit anything other than single family housing. Uh, so to sum up, uh, in, in, in the report we provided, at the end of each section, we provide a quick, quick snapshot of kind of an evaluation of the various options. So um, first, in terms of housing options and affordability, so whether or not that code would um, kind of maximize opportunities for housing development and/or make it uh, reduce the cost of development compared to the other alternative. Um, and so on, on kind of that criteria, the same size lots would have a more positive impact. The larger lots would limit opportunities for development. In terms of compatibility and design, um, I think um, like I mentioned, I don't think necessarily the, the lot size is going to be the important thing to focus on in terms of making uh, middle housing compatible with your single family neighborhoods. Uh, and so the, the black checkmarks that I'll use throughout here are kind of a, a neutral rating. And both um, of these, in terms of the administration of the code and the compliance with the state rules uh, are fairly straightforward. It's also the kind of neutral black checkmark. So you'll notice as we go through those three criteria, the things we're kind of applying to help you think through the pros and cons of each of these uh, different alternatives. So I want to pause there and ask for questions and uh, to give any feedback you have on which of these concepts you prefer.
Next one.
Me too.
Me three.
I would tell you that I'm in favor of the larger lots. Um, and my reasoning behind that is if, if my neighbor next door is going to put in a duplex, triplex, quadplex, it's going to increase the population next door to me. And I would like as much buffer there to be maintained as possible. And you're going to see that through a better chance of that through a larger lot than you are sticking with all the same size lots.
I agree.
That's my reasoning. So I would be in favor of concept one, larger lots.
I'd agree with you.
Mr. Chair, for, for what, uh, staff agrees with the recommendations and we, our thinking is very much the same as yours. Uh, we're, generally speaking, we prefer the larger lots in this situation. And we really appreciate the consultant paring down and going through the analysis to figure out what kind of impacts it would have. Um, that's really what we're looking for. We can make the best decisions as we go through these code amendments. We think the real focus should be on this, the design issues and the form that it takes on the ground and what kind of leeway we have under the OARS to make that happen.
Okay, this is helpful uh, direction. It sounds like there's majority or at least a clear support for the larger lot concept. Okay, next topic I want to cover is um, the size and bulk of middle housing. So uh, the city has setback standards, height standards, lot coverage standards now, which um, we kind of combine all those together. They in effect will limit the um, the footprint of a, of a build, of the house or a building. Um, and uh, kind of its relation of the size of the building to the lot. And that's all, what those are all intended to do, also to then provide enough separation between buildings and enough um, green space on the lot. And so uh, we went ahead and tested the existing uh, lot coverage and setback standards and put together a couple of models here to give you a sense for um, what it might look like if uh, under the existing standards, you know, something like a quadplex uh, was proposed and it maximized the buildable area on the site. Uh, so that's what that image on the left shows. That doesn't look that dissimilar from a very large, single family house. Uh, the thing that might be different about this is that um, when you have multiple units, the developer may be more likely to maximize this, the size of the building. Um, we've seen that in other places. It makes sense. It's kind of a natural limit to how large a middle house or how large a single house or a single unit can be before it starts, starts, stops being kind of um, uh, marketable to a developer. Um, and so you're more likely to see it, you know, maximizing the size of the building here in the development area on the site. Um, and so uh, to give you a comparison, if the city were to um, uh, set some additional restrictions on the overall uh, size or the floor area uh, of middle housing types, um, then um, the image on the right shows you kind of how that might shrink down um, the maximum size of a, of the building. Um, and there are ways to do this while still allowing some flexibility for the building to be cited in various ways. And we would recommend a floor area ratio. Uh, and so that is a ratio of the, of total amount of flurry on the site to the uh, lot. There's other ways uh, we can structure that. Uh, really, right now, I'm just looking for your direction on uh, are you concerned about the bulk and si- size of middle housing compared to existing housing? And um, if so, then we probably want to try to integrate some bulk and size limits. Uh, FAR could be one of them. Might be other ways to do it.
Can I, can I ask again? I'm sorry, this is Chris. Just to clarify for everyone, including myself, our code currently doesn't apply FAR. So just for everyone's benefit, um, the floor area ratio is measuring, just think of it as the actual floor that you're standing on. Right? That's a little bit different than the way we currently review these kind of bulk regulations in our code, which is our lot coverage. Lot coverage is the airplane flying overhead. It looks down. It sees that footprint on the ground. It's a percentage of your lot. Say point three five, I think is our general number, point four or five, depending on the heights, I think, of the building. As opposed to the floor area ratio, which is the total square footage of the building that can get taller, if that makes sense. So you can oftentimes squeeze more floor area inside, inside a, a different envelope. And there's, there's been pros and cons to each way of measuring. Our current code measures under a lot coverage. Jamin, do you have a feel for if we were to switch the way we look at this bulk regulation, right? The bulk, how big the building is on the site. We, first of all, we always have setbacks to push it back and locate it on the property. But we also have this size limitation that we put on it under lock coverage. Um, Jamin, do you have an idea as to, if we were to not use lock coverage and instead use FAR, what would say an FAR of point six mean for a single family home? And am I right in assuming that whatever, whatever we apply to this would be the same for a single family? I could be wrong about that.
Yes, you know, that, that's a good, that's a good point is that any of these um, limitations, um, you need to apply equally to single family and to middle housing.
Did you have a good, for what it would mean if we took our, if this were, right now, we have, I think it's point three five or something called, have ratted off because he's, does this much more on a daily basis. Uh, and instead adjusting to the FAR, there might be some benefits to it. I was just curious what impact it would have on the way we look at single family. And I don't really know.
Don't necessarily need to get rid of maximum lot coverage. These can work together. So maximum lot coverage will regulate the side of the building footprint. FAR regulates the overall floor area. And cities do use those together. Um, and it uh, it, it may seem redundant, but they actually kind of address different things. So, but if you were to apply, let's say, this, this is a table in the report and you have a 6,000 square foot lot and you're um, let's say you had a maximum floor area ratio of point six. Uh, and you had, so they effectively, you could still allow a 3,600 square foot uh, single family house on that lot, um, which is a very large. And so when we, when we set those numbers, point six is kind of just a, a general number. Um, we'll look at, okay, how big of a single family house could you have? How, how big could the units be in a triplex or quadplex? And make sure it's, it's reasonable and it's not setting a too restrictive limit on, on any of them. It's still allowing kind of a reasonable um, unit size.
Uh, Jamin, if I may recap the situation for the committee, uh, would it be fair to describe a situation that here, like in most places, zoning allows people to build very, very big houses, when I call them McMansions, but most people don't. Um, so the question is whether to allow people to occasionally build a big house and to have most middle housing be as big as those big houses. Or to have all housing, single family detached houses and middle housing be a little on the smaller size.
Yes. Yeah, that, that sums it up well.
If I, if I'm understanding this whole thing right, what you're talking about is, one is how much area of the lot can you cover up? And the other, the FAR thing is, how many floors and therefore square foot of housing can you have? Is that my?
Yes.
Get? Okay. Well, yeah, because you could go up or go down. Um, I, I, the, the number of square feet in a house, um, if you want two floors or two and a half floors or whatever, I, I, I'm fine with that personally. I'm more concerned about the, the lock coverage and therefore the amount of yard space, the amount of, and how that then coincides with the other houses in the neighborhood, how that coincides with the feel of the neighborhood, how that coincides with green space for kids to play. You know, the, the dove landing thing uh, as an example. People that move in there are going to have, it doesn't strike me as someplace that, that's going to involve a lot of kids because they're not going to have a lot of yard space. If you move into this kind of a neighborhood though, you're, you're moving into a, a neighborhood with large yard spaces or, or larger, and it would seem to me to come in and drop one in that's substantially bigger than the houses on either side of it. Doesn't make sense. So I'm more about lock coverage than number of square feet in the house.
I agree. I like concept two.
I, I, I hope I
But also.
summed that up right.
Um, oh. Also though, um, you're, you're putting four units in, in a space for a single family house. So they become these little boxes that I'm, I don't know. I just don't, I don't like. I'm, I don't know, I just don't, I don't like. Oh, I like the, you know, the F A R limit thing.
Concept two.
Oh, concept two.
So it sounds like there's some support for this idea of restricting the overall size of the building. And, but there's some concern about not wanting to make that too restrictive so that either you can't have a, a large house or that the units in a, in a quadplex would be so small that they're just not really attractive. And, and it sounds like also there's more concern about lot coverage than there is about the overall size. Am I, am I kind of summarizing that correctly?
I think so.
Okay. So what I would recommend is, let's go ahead and, and test out, and we will actually draft up some four area ratio limits. And they might vary by the zone, district. And we'll give a couple more examples of kind of specifically what a development would look like under each of those standards. And I can also show lock coverage and show you how that can vary under each of these. But it sounds like a couple more concrete examples might be helpful.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Unless there's any other questions, we move on to design standards. Okay. So the first thing I wanted to kind of try to clarify with this is that the design standards that apply to middle housing, the, so the, as with many of these other topics, there are state rules now that kind of limit the types of design standards you can apply to middle housing. And so the two basic options are one, either apply the same standards that you apply to single family housing and duplexes. So right now, the city has architectural design standards for single family houses and duplexes. And then they have a separate set of standards for multifamily housing, which is anything with three or more units on one lot. So that set of standards for multifamily housing can no longer apply to middle housing. It is more restrictive than the model code, which is the other option. And it is not the same set of standards that applies to single family. So something's got to change about the design standards that would apply in middle housing. So the two options are apply the same standards that applied a single housing and duplex. Or apply the standards of the D L C D model code. And so the first kind of column is what you have in your current code. And here is how it kind of would be treated in the amended code under each option. And if I could kind of boil down what the differences between these two is, you could think about it more about what your goal is for the design of middle housing. So here's two images. The one on the left is a row of townhomes that have been kind of designed to more blend in with your typical single family houses. Pitch roofs. The materials used. Some of the detailing looks more like, like a lot of newer single family houses do in Woodburn. The image on the right is something that is a little more modern. It's that there is more variation in the roof types and the materials. Wouldn't necessarily blend in with your existing single family housing. It might be attractive to some people and you might want to allow that to happen in some places. But under the current single family and duplex design standards, that image on the right would not be, could not be approved under those standards. And there would need to be some changes made to allow something that looks a little more like that. So kind of if I could lay out three, three basic options here. First is apply the existing single family design standards. And basically from a perspective of compatibility and administration of the code, fairly straightforward. The only downside is there's a little less flexibility in styles of housing that are available. And so that could be one thing. It's just a detractor for developers that want to propose middle housing. A second option would be to keep your same single family standards, apply those to middle housing. But modify them to allow a little bit more flexibility in a few ways. So for example, the current single family standards require roofs with a minimum, they require pitched roofs. And they require eaves, I believe. Certain materials that are required. What could be done is kind of loosening up a couple of those standards or setting alternative standards. So an example might be, well, you don't have to have a pitched roof, but if you don't, you need to have, let's say a cornice on a flat roof or a or a deeper overhang on a flat roof. So kind of achieving a similar intent of allowing a little more flexibility. So we could work on something that would do that. The third option would be to simply apply the, the standards of the D L C D model code. That would, those standards are fairly limited. They don't focus much on things like the pitch of the roof, the materials. Focus a little bit on the amount of windows. Not much on kind of how the entrance orients to the street. They're more limited than your current standards. So from perspective of flexibility, that'd be the most flexible. With, from the perspective of compatibility with the existing single family housing in Woodburn, probably less so. Little bit easier to to comply with the law if you use those standards, but not a lot of difference there on that third criteria. Okay, I think that's the summary. Have any strong opinions?
I was gonna ask if I could just speak just for a second.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, just kind of a staff comment. And again, this is what, this requires, all, all these require a lot of real, I mean, they require kind of deep thinking on your part. I mean, these are, you don't have to make a final decision tonight, but these are kind of guiding the direction. And these are the kind of amendments that the consultant is going to move forward with. So we appreciate that it, this, these are complicated and hard to get your head around. I can give you sort of staff's two cents. Maybe it's more mine instead of all of staff. I haven't universally asked everybody. Generally speaking, I, I could just tell you, I personally like, I like the idea of concept two, where you get an odd, the opportunity to modify our existing standards and open up some more flexibility. I can, and I can give you sort of my simple rationale, which is, A, I'm generally opposed to just adopting D L C's model standard. It's written for the whole state and it's written for every community in, in the state. And I, I'll be honest, I haven't spent a lot of time on them. Why would we bother doing that? We have our own single family standards. I actually would like to open the can up of, of our existing single family architectural standards and revisit them. I think that's really worth looking at. Again, I, Colin turned me said this, I don't know why you can't build a flat roofed house in Woodburn. I, that's perfectly fine with me, when you can't. But again, it's just my two cents. I, I think we should have a little more opportunities for different kinds of architectural design in our single family homes. That's just single family. And if we were going to do that, it seems like a good time to go in and make sure that we're also evaluating against these different housing types, duplex, et cetera. And that would let you do it under two. That's, that's my two cents. The other alternative, which is one, means you keep the existing, you know, single family homes. We kind of make these other housing types fit into it. Since I'm not actually in love with the existing single family architectural types, I wouldn't suggest you do that. That's, that's where my two cents come down. But of course, that's just my thoughts on it.
Well, I'm not in love with them either exactly, but it's a small town. Personally, I'm for concept one. I, I'd like for things to, you know, fit in with what, what's already here.
Everything is so bastardized at this point. I mean, you know, there's, there's some kind of, you know, sort of accepted kind of style, but, you know, everybody's done such awful things to their homes. In my opinion, sorry. And
But again, that's all in the eyes of the beholder. And, and the builder and the owner.
Well, and your comment, does that fit into one, two, or three? Where does that fit?
Well, I think too, because it just, it gives somebody a chance to, you know, have a more modern house or, you know. Speaking as I have an 1895.
I'm one that's, that's I kind of like, I like the idea of having a little bit of freedom, but I think things ought to go in with the neighborhood. I think, I think of, of the old Smith edition, for example. And I mean, that, that was a, that was an addition that was all pretty much built around the same conceptual idea of that type of houses. So I think it thinks in that neighborhood should match. There, there are other neighborhoods that are kind of fall into that same Johnson edition where I grew up. It's kind of that same sort of thing. It's all the, kind of the same vintage houses. Now, there are other parts of town that there's a little bit of everything. So a little bit of everything could go, you know, in those places that, that grew up more, one or two buildings at a time. They weren't a, a addition type thing. So but it, but in it, but in a definite neighborhood, Smith edition, Johnson edition, and some of those, the, the old, old town here, what, what I refer to as old town. Front Street to Settle Meyer. You know, that area. You know, actually done right, a, a flat top building, there could, could kind of grasp that whole theme. But, but coming in and putting in a Smith edition home in the middle of Hayes Street doesn't fit, you know, so that, that's what I think. It, it's, it's a it, it, it really is a depends on it. Whatever happens needs to happen in the flavor of the neighborhood to a degree. And if there's no flavor in the neighborhood, go for it.
So then this concept one for you.
Well, yes, for the most part, but, but I can see, I can see also parts of town where having a little more latitude makes a lot of sense. And I also believe in the concept of it's my property, I can do it as damn well pleased with it. I, I know that doesn't fit. But, but so having a little more latitude where you can makes, makes sense to me.
I, I think the consultant has something in mind with, with that idea that there are neighborhoods or areas of town that have a certain look that we may motivate.
Yeah.
We may not want to play upon and write code for that. Jamie or Colin.
Well, but also, Susie, if you look at the Settle Meyer house, and then right next to it is this mid-century red house. But, you know, I mean, that is the perfect example of, oh my God, you know. So.
Small towns.
Well, that house was originally built by some folks that owned a furniture store.
Right.
So they were a little out there back in the day.
Well, I want to pick up this, this thread because there's a whole, there's a whole separate topic that is really closely related to this, mostly about design. But so that, that idea that there's some different neighborhoods in Woodburn, and they have a different character. And, and so as part of the initial work for this project, we did a little bit of a deep dive into that and tried to, tried to draw some boundaries. And I don't know if we got it right or not, and this would require some further refinement before you probably feel like it's right on with how character varies and architectural character varies across Woodburn. But part of the, part of the challenge is, for the most part, the city regulates, does the design of housing simply just by the, the housing type and a little bit by the zone it's in, which is the map on the left. But there's not much other variation for these to account for these different neighborhoods with a little different look and feel. So one thing we could do is is to not only vary, let me skip ahead to this. Here's a decent example, I think, of what you're getting at, is the types of things that we could do to make it more context sensitive. So for example, in the downtown area, we have a lot of older housing stock. Some Victorians, some craftsmen. But there's some, some general basic elements of the form of that, how those houses that are more similar. And so we could do some things like requiring a steeper roof pitch in that area than in other areas. Requiring new, new housing have porches. Porches are fairly common in that area. Even requiring vertically oriented windows, that's kind of a traditional design pattern. Where then you have in some other areas, we have a lot of more of like ranch homes and mid-century homes. Like the one on the right, you might allow the, the roof pitch to be a little more flat, because that's kind of common for those one-story ranch homes. Could, it could be a porch or just a simple recessed entry there. And maybe you don't regulate the window orientation, because there's a mix of some that are more vertical and some that are more horizontal. So those are a few ideas of the kinds of things we could do. I guess, why don't we just pause there, see if you like that idea? This would be kind of along the lines of concept two, where you keep your existing standards. But you tweak them a little bit more to respond to the various neighborhood contexts.
These neighborhoods are established, there's not going to be, I mean, are we talking about applying standards to new houses that are built in a, in like a subdivision situation? Because in our downtown area, in the area I live in, all of us live in. You can't, there's no space. It's filled. Everything you're going to be looking at is in new subdivisions or, you know, new neighborhoods around. There's no room to, in any of these neighborhoods.
Well, we, we kind of have to plan for the possibility of, of demolitions and redevelopment. And I don't think that's happened much yet or at all yet in Woodburn. But it is a possibility. And it is perhaps more likely with these code changes, which all allow a wider variety of housing types. And so we kind of have to plan for either outcome. I do agree that the majority of the development will occur in your, some of your larger undeveloped tracks of the edge of town. But there probably will be some infill that will happen, you know, if you get this in the next 10, 20 years. So.
So this concept, we had concept one. And then you mentioned this one, but it's called concept three. That's not the same as that other concept three, is it?
No, yeah, sorry if that's confusing. I think back on, yeah, what do you think? You know, the existing single family design standards apply pretty much to all neighborhoods in Woodburn. And the feedback I'm looking for here is, should they vary more? Should there be some different standards in different parts of Woodburn?
My, 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 my two cents is that, yes, concepts should vary depending on the neighborhood. But that's kind of my whole thing. And, and
One and a half.
Well, well, what happened is we jumped topics here. He went from topic three to topic eight. Because I think eight had neighborhood character. We, we kind of, we kind of, we kind of jumped to another. I jumped in my discussion, jumped to another area and Jamin filled in. He jumped ahead as well. He, he followed me. Didn't you guys get the memo?
So, so in a way, we are saying concept one, which means we're So, so in a way, we are saying concept one, which means we're.
Well.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
I, I've said my piece. I've, and I, and I think it gives him the feedback he's looking for and then he can take it from there.
But none of these things are going to change in Woodburne. I mean, this, these neighborhoods are established. There's no room to build inside them. It's going to be all around it.
But I, but I think there's. I think there's, there's places in all the neighborhoods where there's a home. We can probably walk down the street and go, you know, it might be easier to demolish that thing and it would be to remodel it.
Yeah. Tornado comes through.
And, and so.
They do do it after tornado.
Well, or a good ice storm. Um, anyway, moving right along, we're going to be here till 10 o'clock.
I wanted to add briefly that it's not just a scenario of no change and demolitions. I mean, some people could choose to add to an existing house, build an addition, and some people might have houses large enough that they will basically divide them internally, leave the shells it is, but convert it into apartments. So it's not an all or nothing scenario. Some people could do small changes over time.
So if I could summarize, it sounds like, uh, concept three is, is a no-go. In, I, I agree with that. And there is some interest in maybe allowing a little bit either more flexibility in the design standards generally or, um, vary, varying them by neighborhood. But a little bit concerned about whether that would go too far and be either too complex or, um, uh, would be too restrictive. If we tried to get too cute and varying it by neighborhood, if I could summarize it. Is that fairly summarized the opinion so far?
Yeah, that's kind of sort of it.
That, that's enough to go on from here. Yeah, you'd be, we, at this, at this point, uh, I just need to get a sense for, for what you're thinking and then we'll work with staff to kind of flesh this out a little bit more and, um, you know, devise a kind of set of changes that we think makes the most sense.
Well, since I opened up this can of worms, I'm going to tell you that there's some neighborhoods that I'm going to be a concept one kind of guy. But there are some, there are some neighborhoods, I think, or areas of town, maybe that concept two would fit. And jumping up to number eight, holding on to neighborhood character, I think is important. I'm squarely on the middle of the fence.
That's okay. So, uh, the next topic to talk about is landscaping and open space requirements. So the city currently doesn't have any onsite landscaping requirements for single-family houses. The city does have landscaping requirements for multifamily housing. But like we talked about with the other design standards, those cannot apply to, um, middle housing. And so you do need to apply the same landscaping standards to single-family housing as you apply to middle housing. So as we're talking about each of these, think about this as a standard that would apply, whether it's a one, single-family house or a duplex or a row town houses. Either way. So you could keep your existing standard and that's concept one, which really only requires street trees for a single-family housing. Now, when I say landscaping, I mean actual planting standards. So. This does have, you know, like we talked about, lot coverage limitations, which effectively require a lawn. And I think there's some standards about maybe having, you can't just have, uh, your whole, uh, front yard paved. But there's nothing about, you have to have a certain number of trees or shrubs or things like that to kind of actually have some landscaping in front of your yard. So you could continue with your thing, with your existing standard, which only requires street trees. Concept two would be, uh, to have some some, some, uh, front yard landscaping requirements. So this might look like, um, having you know, shrubs along the foundation of the house and maybe, um, a small tree or two in the front yard. It could be various options for how you could comply with that. This is something that, um, also is probably most important or more important in that infill situation we're talking about. Because if, if, if it does happen that there's a, there's a demolition and a redevelopment of a, of a lot. You know, in, in more established neighborhoods, you also have more established landscaping. And so a new house coming in will stand out a lot more if it doesn't, doesn't have any landscaping in the front yard or if it's just lawn area. So concept three is a little bit, uh, different, um, but this would be, this is asking kind of in addition to, um, front yard landscaping or, or even separate from it. Do you want to require that, uh, each lot have a certain amount of open space on the site that is kind of usable for recreation? So this is different from just yard area in general or, um, or love the maximum block coverage, for example. Which effectively requires some amount of lot area. But it's actually saying, okay, part of, you have to show when you submit a site plan that there's enough area there for a little bit of usable open space for the, um, for the residents. This becomes a little bit more important if you think about it on a multi-unit development, a triplex or quadplex. There may be a little less space, parking might take up more of the lot. And so kind of, um, requiring that developers find a way to fit in a little bit of kind of a usable open space. So by usable, I mean it's surfaced in something you can actually use. It's, it's not landscape. It's not, you know, it's not rocks. And it has, um, it's of a dimensions that's kind of usable. It's not a long skinny piece, right? It's a, you know, some rectangular, triangular sized piece that you can, you can actually use to, to either for active recreation for kids or just for hanging out in as in like a patio or something. So basically these build on each other. Or concept one would be the light least, uh, restrictive. Concepts two and three would add some new requirements that would apply to single-family housing and middle housing.
Can I, can I ask a question, Jamin? Uh, this, sorry. If, if you don't mind, I'm just trying to make sure I understand some of these as well. When we talk about these changes, we already have landscaping and open space requirements for multifamily developments in the, our multifamily zone. Correct? What we're talking about would only be impacted for this all housing types, which is single-family as well as these middle housing types on, in our single-family zones. Is that right?
It would be single-family housing or middle housing types in all residential zones. So it's either your, either your single-family zone or your multifamily zone.
Uh, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So if we chose to do nothing, can we still, if we chose to make no changes and simply start to require what we do now, a street tree in front of single-family homes? No, no additional landscaping. Would that, do we have to modify our multifamily landscaping requirements in our multifamily zones for apartments, say? Am I missing that?
You would not have to, um, modify the standards themselves. But you could not apply those standards to middle housing. You would have to write in there to say that the, um, these standards apply to multifamily housing, which now is a separate category from these middle housing types, right? And it would probably be five or more units on one lot, where right now it's three or more units on one lot.
I'm, I'm just trying to get my head around how it impacts what we currently have. I can just sort of give you my, my two thoughts, bigger picture. Obviously, you, you probably guess, maintenance of this and long-term care of existing landscaping in front of homes on individually owned lots is very tricky for staff. You know, at what point do I come back five years later and say, hey, that area was supposed to be green and I'm going to slap you with a fine? I mean, I'm not, I'm really not sure how I do that. That would be tricky. Just, it just will be. Not that I, and believe me, I love landscaping. I think it's a great, great buffer and I think it softens everything from the street and I love seeing us, uh, I want to see more landscaping and promote it as much as we can. I, I guess my concern is, and I know we need to be very careful about differentiating between multifamily and single-family, but it's, there's to me a clear difference between a three-story walk-up apartment building and how we landscape it and how we landscape a single-family home. And I want to make sure that, that, that some way we're able to do them separately. And I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I fully understand how we get there under the law.
Would be able to. Yeah, you can have the same multifamily landscaping and open space requirements. You just cannot apply those same requirements to the middle housing. Unless you also applied them to single-family housing. Which I, I don't imagine, because they're not well-suited for single-family housing.
Overall, that's my kind of, you probably guessed from my two cents on landscaping for anywhere in the single family. I, I personally, I think it's very difficult to apply landscape standards onto, e- even if it's a duplex on private land, certainly can, and I'm not averse to it. I, believe me, I love applying landscape standards. It's just, it's going to be very tricky. These are individually owned lots and some, I have enough trouble now getting people to keep their trees, much less ones that are required under the code that they have to keep. Some people don't like them. Some people want a grass lawn and, and that's just what we do. That's my two cents. Right. They're, they're tricky.
So I had a question. Concept one, street trees and significant trees, but that, that's not really excluded from concept two, is it?
No, yeah, I think it, it wouldn't make sense to, um, to require front yard landscaping, but then not require street trees. So one and two are kind of.
I, I like concept two because it's requiring more and, uh, hopefully if there, a quadruplex goes in next door. It'll be landscaped more like the rest of the block.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I think they should be the same thing as we have for single-family dwellings. So I'd be a concept one guy. Sorry, Sharon. Well, and, and I also, you know, thinking of this as a homeowner. It seems to me homeowners chafe under requirements and adding landscaping, I think is, is going to be like, oh my God, you're going to tell me how to landscape the property too?
Well, I mean, it's pretty basic, lawn and trees. I mean.
Well, see, anyway. That's, that's, we'll just leave it at that.
Problem is it can be done without lawn. I mean, some nice landscaping is done without actual grass.
Like gravel, it's pretty good sometimes.
Gravel?
Sure. You should actually parking.
There, there are lots that are planted with no lawn.
I know, I agree.
Well, because of climate change and everything, they're going more desert-y kinds of landscaping.
No, and then you cut that.
Yeah, I don't think they're really talking about lawns so much as compatibility.
I mean, those other, the two pictures, I mean, I thought each one was appropriate or, you know, I thought they both looked good because of the design of the houses.
That's helpful enough. You know, there's kind of a spectrum here. The, the front yard landscaping requirements could be fairly basic. And, and, you know, you, you could scale them up or down, but it, it sounds like I can sum it up right. We like the idea of landscaping, little concern about being a too, uh, too onerous. And then, and then staff also has some concerns about how you enforce it over time.
One more, very quick thought, Jamin. Um, your, your next chapter is going to talk about off-street parking. And I mean, I'll, I'll sum it up in a nutshell. We're not going to be able to acquire the additional off-site parking that we currently acquire for duplexes and quadplexes and triplexes. Good news is that means there's not going to be a sea of driveway in front of each one of these homes. So when, as I look at these two pictures, one of the things I jumped out at me is the one on the left doesn't have a driveway. I can't see a driveway there. It looks like a big green area. The one on the right doesn't actually have driveways, but they look like those ultra wide steps that come in. But again, under the city standards, those would each have to have two car drive, a driveway to support two cars. Which significantly cuts into the landscaping in front of every house, particularly on a more narrow lot.
But what about in the back? Can't they?
If we allow alleys so they can get to them, yeah. Just, just commenting on.
Well, that'd be new construction. We don't have any alleys.
We're get, we're getting there on alleys. But I, what I think is interesting about it is as you has, as, as the city going forward is going to have lesser parking requirements, the driveways, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamin, are just going to be more narrow. You're going to have occasions where they don't need to provide the additional parking. They may choose to, they often do. But now they, they may not have to, but they are going to have to have presumably more landscaping. And I'm just talking, you know, about the future here, which you may likely see more green space in front of homes.
Yep, I think that's, I think that's, that's right on. You know, all depends on the builder and how they see the market and how many parking spaces they think they need to, to sell or to rent the unit, but certainly not having the requirement makes it more likely you get some things, or maybe you can fit the parking all on the side in a shared lot and have that be screened.
It sounded like here it was a, between one and two, at least. I, I didn't hear anything about any recommendations on three.
Well, I personally am refor, requiring garages for a single-family dwelling.
Oh, no, I, I meant for landscaping and open space. Look, looking at these one, two, three. No, no, I was just mentioning, that'll be your next chap. I didn't, I heard nothing on three. If I'm summarizing, it sounded like one and two concerns were minor maintenance concerns. The others were maybe being a little bit too restrictive, I think we heard from the planning commission, but generally I heard generally people saying they kind of wanted to see some type of and flexibility in additional landscaping to soften the impacts that these might have. And we'd be okay doing that with all single-family homes in the future too, because just to, you know, repeat like a broken record, everything we apply to these duplexes and triplexes, we will also be applying to all single-family homes. That's, is that roughly a pretty good summary, Mr. Chair, for going forward? And if you didn't mind, I'm just noticing the time and I noticed we're halfway through the, the report. I, and I haven't asked Jamin about this. I, I apologize for it. I know already that our next meeting has a, I know a very short item on it. It's a quasi-judicial item. I'm not expecting testimony on it and I would be absolutely shocked if it took us more than 20 minutes to get through. Very simple. It modifies one condition of approval on, an approval we had in the past. So.
So you're saying that we could put the rest of this at our next meeting?
I was throwing that out at you. Again, I haven't asked Jamin if he's available for that. You know if you're available, Jamin? Do you mind if I ask?
Uh, no, I don't. Let me see, uh, what, what's the date again?
Two weeks from today.
The fourth Thursday of the month.
Uh, so the twenty seven, twenty second?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, I am available.
It, it's very helpful. I guess, let's every, the planning commission go through this report a little bit more and I'm, again, I know we're going to have a time at our next meeting. It's a short item.
This is a lot, this is a lot to get through. This is a big code update. So it, it makes sense to deliberate on it. In terms of our timing, um, for the overall project, I don't have concern about moving this meeting out. I think we can still, we can, we can start a lot of work from based on what we've heard so far. But I, I also want to like have you keep in mind that, um, you don't need to adopt these code amendments until June of 2022. And so you are a little bit ahead of schedule in terms of that, by the time our scope writes out, wraps up, uh, which our contract is finished at the end of June, I believe, then, um, you will have a draft set of code amendments. You'll have a little bit more time to deliberate on those after that, before you, before you need to comply.
Thanks, Jim. It's important for us to utilize you as much as we can and get the, get the best info. Appreciate the work you're doing thus far.
Okay. So do we want to call it there or do you want to?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. That sounds good. I will hook up parking a couple of weeks.
Thank you for your flexibility on this. We appreciate it. I think you'll get better input next time too.
No problem.
Or maybe.
A lot to, to get through. You know, this is, you're not alone. There's a lot of other cities doing the same thing, trying to wrap their head around, uh, all the different changes they need to make. Uh, and so taking, taking your time to get through it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Okay.
Is there any other business to come before us tonight?
I did not have any more than to remind you, we will have a meeting in two weeks. We'll be covering this and I have a short quasi-judicial.
Okay. And I have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor?